All right, we're gonna start the planning commission meeting. I'm gonna start by sleuthing a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of liberty and justice for all.
First make a reminder for everyone to silence their cell phones. And we're gonna start with a roll call.
Mary Lyschuk.
Present.
Brian Binney's present. Colin Henderson.
Present.
We have Korm.
All right, we're gonna start with item number three, SIV ambulances. They have requested a continuance. So we will see them next month on Tuesday, March 28th at 2023. All right, now we're gonna go back to item number one, Falcon Field at Pensbury High School, 608 South Olds Boulevard, Phyllis Hills.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Jamie Lynch with Dewey Engineering. I'm the facility engineer for the Pensbury School District. Joining me tonight is Justin Massey, professional engineer with Terraform Engineering, who's done the civil work for the stadium project, and also the facilities director from Pensbury School District, Mr. George Steele. So we're here to present to the planning commission the plans for Falcon Field stadium upgrade, which were submitted back in November. And this is actually a continuance of the project that started last year, beginning with the replacement of the painted steel bleachers on the stadium. And so there are a couple of phases of this project that are presented in the package tonight, and we're gonna take you through those items, and also the review letters that we've received to date. Make sure I got the controls. The first drawing that's included in the package, C102, references the existing conditions out at Falcon Field, I'm sure that you might be familiar with it. We've got home side and away side bleachers that surrounds what's a very interesting track arrangement, it's existing nine lanes in some areas, seven lanes in other areas. The football field is there, the track venue, the scoreboard, stadium lights, all on the high school site midway between East and West High School. And the goal of the project is to replace the track with a new eight lane track, and also to install a synthetic turf field. Also included on the drawings are some ancillary components that have been added for future construction. So the first point that I'd like to make is, this year, this summer, the district would like to proceed with just the eight lane track and the synthetic field inside the stadium. So that's replacing in kind what's there with new synthetic track and a synthetic turf field. The rest of the work that's on the drawings is slated for future years, and I'll explain exactly why. This next drawing, C201, begins to show some of the other features. We have our existing field and track, the stormwater basin for that synthetic turf field is below the field. Adjacent to it, on the practice field that exists now, is the potential for a second synthetic turf field that the district has been eyeing to be constructed in the future, perhaps with privately funded dollars that come into the school district. And so submitted with this plan is the stormwater and all of the components necessary to install a future second synthetic turf field. Also included in the plan are plans for three separate, I'll call them stadium buildings that are desired by the school district, also to be constructed in the future, not as a part of this project this summer. So we have multiple phases, but we wanted to put everything in for the land development approval with the suggestion of the township engineer at once, so you saw the totality of what's being planned. But just want to reiterate, we're talking about only the synthetic football field and the track and the replacement of the scoreboard this coming summer. That's the only thing that's been authorized. As I go forward to take a look, included in the package are all of the land development requirements for site utilities, for stormwater, for the buildings, for the second field, we've got it planned out into the future, and those plans have been identified, and they're the subject of the comments of the township engineer letter. Just to show you in a little bit more detail, this image, which is not included in the plan set, this is the work that's envisioned this summer. It's the track and the field as shown in the plan set, with the associated fencing and stormwater that's included. But as you see to the left of screen here, these buildings are not proposed to be installed now, they are not part of the plan, we are not going for building permits. Sorry to just reiterate that a couple times to make it clear. This area that's to the south of the stadium proper will really remain as is at the end of the summer. And just a large color blow up of what that field would look like, I know the community's very familiar with the stadium, it's certainly a highlight for graduation and sports night in the district. It'll be great to get a synthetic surface that's available for all sports in the district, not just football, which is really the primary use of the stadium now. So all of the school sports, and obviously track would be there, the highlight, having an eight lane competitive track gives the district some more flexibility to have invitationals held at the stadium, and certainly with the capacity of the bleachers, this will be a highlight for the high school campus. Also included in the project, I know you can't read the information here, is the replacement of the stadium lights. The existing lights will be replaced with new directed LED fixtures, so there'll be much less light pollution and light trespass off of the site. I know that that's a long time in coming here, and we've made provisions for that to occur also this summer. So with respect to land development, our NPDS application submission has been made and is administratively complete, so we're working through that process with the conservation district. We've submitted our land development plans, and here we are at the 28th Planning Commission meeting, again reiterating that the buildings are not part of the planned construction for this year. And really the reason for that is the efforts that we've made with TOFA, the Township of Falls Authority, with respect to sewer allocation. We have two things that really stop the ability to add those buildings, which include toilet rooms for the stadium. One is that there's not an official stated sewer allocation for the entirety of the high school site. You may be familiar with that, with records over the past couple of years. The other component is that we need to pursue a waiver with respect to the number of toilets in that facility, because the requirements for spectator require something on the order of 39 toilets per sex, and a waiver of that from LNI would be necessary in order to provide something of a more reasonable number of toilet counts in each of those men's and women's restrooms for the number of events where we really can count on one hand how many times that stadium is filled to capacity. So the sewer issues are really the issues that we have to resolve and finish before any of those buildings could be contemplated to be part of the project, and of course also a connection to the sewer system. One waiver request is on the table, this is a letter forthcoming, I think Terry, Justin, you were gonna submit that to the township engineer, and it's simply a waiver allowing for preliminary final plans here, rather than to have separate plans for this project. So that's our only waiver request associated with the work. And as we move forward, we did get a comment letter out of Jones Engineering. The comments, as we've reviewed them, are fairly benign, there isn't anything that steps out at us, and I've noted here on the slide, all of them receive a will comply response from us. We have editorial changes to make on our drawings, a couple of adjustments based on the engineers' review, general comments editorial, as I mentioned, all of them in our eyes are will comply. I don't know if you want to go comment by comment, or if there's anything that stuck out in your mind, but we feel very confident that all of them can be accommodated. Also from Remington Vernick, there was a traffic review performed associated with the project. The one question related to whether there was gonna be added staff or added people, the answer is no, the enrollment at the school is actually going down. The number of seats in the stadium has also gone down, because last year when the bleachers were added, we actually incorporated ADA seating into the bleachers, so we have fewer number of seats in the bleachers. So no traffic issues are in front of us. The one comment was to make sure that we maintain the existing crosswalk between the auditorium and the building, which we will do as a part of the project. Bucks County Planning Commission, two comments, one was editorial nature, which will comply with, the other related to the sewage facilities that I've described already, and the need for the proper permitting associated with them before buildings could begin. And finally, the office of the fire marshal, really focused his comments on the building, making note of the requirements that we would have with their office as far as signed and sealed plans for fire protection systems. Those would be forthcoming with the building, should that portion of the project actually proceed in the future. That's my presentation in a nutshell, happy to answer any questions that you might have, or review any of the items that is in the land development package.
So any questions, Brian?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. Have you begun the application for the sewage planning modules?
I'm gonna have to say that the answer is no. So we've met with TOFA, we've met with TOFA's engineer, and we have this two-pronged issue, the lack of sewer allocation for the site, plus the requirements which are rather strenuous with respect to the sewer module because of the capacity of the stadium. And so Remington Vernick and TOFA have made a plea, a DEP, on the school district's behalf for a little bit of leniency. As you may know, the requirements are three gallons per person per day for the totality of the seats in the stadium. So that's roughly 5,400 seats, three gallons a day. We currently have, in taking a look at the flows on the site, we don't come anywhere near approaching that, and so we have to go through that process. I'm working with the school district on starting that process to understand that it's necessary. We do know that we need 13 EDUs for the site, and so working on the sewer allocation, plus the requirement for the stadium seats is a challenge, that'll take us through that whole sewer planning module period. So we haven't started, we're in the infancy at this point.
So if, obviously, the concession stand in the buildings are separate from the restroom issue, would you, what would you see the phasing being? When would you build the concession stands in the other two buildings versus, if you had, I mean, there are clearly not as many EDUs involved in that, what is your vision timeframe?
Great question. So there's three buildings, in the middle is a concession building, and that holds the men's and women's toilets for the stadium, so there's 19 of each in that building. To the right is a visitor team room and a home team room, and there are single toilet rooms in those two buildings, one for officials, one for members of teams, and there's also a family toilet room in the home team room. So all of them have toilets, so all of them are subject to the waiver. So near as I can tell at this point, we would go through this process, it may take six or eight months, and so this looks like a summer of 24 building. What we've done, that's a little bit creative, is these buildings are prefabricated at a Bucks County precast facility, so they build the buildings offsite, they're shipped in modules, and they're put on the ground. So that's one thing that works in the school district's favor with respect to phasing. If the permit is received, the district can say go, the work is all done offsite, the buildings are shipped in a matter of four or five weeks, they're actually assembled on site, so that works for next summer.
You're a very optimistic man, if you think you can get sewer planning modules in six months.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mary?
No, I'm fine.
I have no questions. Do we have any public comment?
Could you please come up to the microphone?
Charlie Bozzo, Falls Township. Will all the concessions be moved from the stadium area to those buildings? Or will some of the concessions still remain under the bleachers?
So right now, new concessions have not been incorporated with the bleacher project, so when we start this fall, there would have to be some form of temporary concessions that would be available. It was never a cooking concessions or anything like that, it was all snack food based, and so it would remain that way in a temporary fashion. Also, porta-johns were used for sewer flows in the stadium, and that same type of format would occur after the track and field are done.
In the end result, will all the concessions be moved to just that building at the end?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones, could you refresh our memory on the process of the phasing? Will this have to come back or not?
The way it's presented now, it would not have to come back based on the applicants' plan, so they won't be able to clarify what was said earlier, they won't, they won't be heard through our conversation with BDP, is that all construction that's under-
Is that the bleacher in your microphone?
All construction that's under the approval of the NPDS permit can proceed without the planning modules, but BDP does not allow, or strongly discourages, as a township, from issuing building permits without the planning module being resolved. So assuming that the planning module can get resolved within a five-year period, the buildings could go for building permits once the sewage approval is made. So the phasing would be that the land development is comprehensive tonight, it's approved tonight, and if the land development approval runs out before they've actually moved on the concession stands, then they'd have to come back. Other than that, they would not.
Five years, sounds more realistic, right?
Close.
Thanks, Joe.
It's a pleasure, the board.
All right. I'll make a motion to recommend approval for the preliminary and final land development application for the Pensbury Stadium, Pensbury School District, 608 South Olds Boulevard, with a billion TNP numbers, Falcon Stadium. If you want, I can list them all out, would you prefer me to? Okay. With, based on the Jones Engineering Associates' letter dated February 23, 2023, the Remington Vernick's engineering letter, December 22, 2022, and when the building finally goes up, the February, the Fire Marshal's letter, February 21, 2023, with compliance to everything, is correct, with compliance to everything.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Brian, poll the board.
Mary Lyschuk.
Yes.
Brian Binney's a yes, Colin Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that would include that waiver request for-
We, so in the beginning, I said the preliminary and final land development.
All right, great, thank you very much, we appreciate your assistance.
We'll see you back here in five years. All right, so we're gonna move on to item number two, Keystone Trade Center, 700 Southport Road, Phyllis Hills.
Good evening, Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of North Point. We're here for discussion of what we've labeled Phase Three of North Point's development of the TPC. What I would suggest, if the planning commission would like us to address it this way, I know there's been some dialogue and some thought for a few months that we've had continued on our end because of various scheduling conflicts, to have just a brief overview of sort of where we stand on the master site situation, any associated improvements aren't necessarily correlated with the development. So before we dive into Phase Three, again, if it would be all right with the planning commission, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Jeremy at the outset, just to give sort of a general overview, and then of course, we can dive into any details tonight and/or at next month's meeting, if we want to submit anything. We know we submitted this relatively close proximity to the meeting this evening, so we can have a conversation at greater length moving forward, but we thought, considering we're here for Phase Three, we wanted to give a more global update at the outset before we dive into the development that's proposed this evening.
Does that work for you guys?
Yep.
Sherman?
Yeah, it works.
Feel free to jump in if there are questions along the way, but yeah, if you don't mind me in vanna.
Yep.
The kind of lower right-hand corner of the page, and I think you guys have copies of this. So Building One and Building Three are under construction. Building Three, actually, we received TCO at the end of the year, last year. Building One is kind of wrapping up shell completion, the steel is all erected, the roof is about 75% on the building, the perimeter of the site, you know, paving and utilities are being installed, so that one's coming along. We're actually gonna hand the space over to the tenant, starting in May, so we'll have a little bit of the interior work to do after that point, but they'll start work on the material handling operation inside the building. Phase Two, kind of the upper right-hand corner, Buildings Four, Five, and Six, we'll kind of go in reverse order in terms of where they're at in construction. Building Six, about three-quarters of the precast panels are erected, steel is about 50% complete, the roof will be starting in pretty short order in that building. Building Five, we've actually turned over about three-quarters of the building pad, prepping for foundations to begin, working on site utilities. And then Building Four, that pad has been completed, site utilities to the site. So that's Phase One, Phase Two, and then as Mike had mentioned earlier, tonight, we're here to present land development plans for Phase Three, which is Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten. Four buildings, about 3 million square feet. As you go around Port Road, you'll see, you know, relocating that through the middle of our phase, ties back into the south end of the property on center, sorals kind of catches the east side of that site. That's what we've got, I would say, kind of confirmed locked in in terms of our planning. Beyond that, Phase Four is what we're calling the, I guess that'd be southeast corner of the site, the lower left-hand page. Everything outside of that, we're considering Phase Five, and there's, you know, maybe a little less certainty, but some of the kind of one-off buildings, BP35 at the very south end of the site, there's, you know, a smaller narrower site along the Dominion Power Plant, and then we have a couple remote parcels like Elcon, and then two more buildings that we're waiting until after the tenants are, their leases expire or relocated. The only other thing I would say is, I know we've had some conversations too around sidewalks, obviously you guys have seen what's been presented for Phase One. Phase Two sidewalk picks up here and extends around Ben Fairless, I think we have Phase Three shown on the plans as well, so, you know, continuing with that theme of installing sidewalks around one, on one side of the road, around all the major roadways. Happy to answer any questions, or if you guys have anything related to the master plan update?
And which building did you sell, Building Four?
Building Four, yeah, the site was sold to Lidl.
So the site was sold, you're not leasing it to them?
Correct, so we actually, the property was leased to Lidl, they had signed a land lease, they intended to construct their own facility, but as kind of the deal progressed, it was such a heavy capital investment for them, it just, they were adamant about owning the building, you know, they felt like it was a necessity for them in order to proceed with their roughly $200 a square foot building, which is, you know, 200-plus million dollars.
Okay, so is that the plan for other ones, or is it just, it could be just-
No.
-building by building basis depending on?
It's certainly a very unique situation for that building, you know, our intention is to own and operate these buildings long-term, and, you know, a lot of the tenants that we have leased to so far, 15-year, 10-year, that was a 30-year deal, for example, so, between North Point, our equity partner, Northwestern Mutual, that's our intention, is to hold these buildings long-term.
Okay. Also, I believe Building Seven, isn't that where Harshco was located?
Correct, kind of Seven and Nine, you can see a little bit on the overlay, I don't know how well it shows, you're on the plans you have, but yeah, it does impact the sites for Seven and Nine. Obviously, we're working on a relocation strategy for them as well.
There's a number of, there have been a number of tenants throughout the park that have really been there since North Point acquired the site from USX, and as the leases have burned off, or other relocation efforts have been made, obviously, we can't construct any of the buildings, or two of the buildings depicted on this plan, until a permanent solution is identified for Harshco.
And I would just say, or add, that there are some other kind of major site constraints that we're through as well, the central rail yard is kind of catty corner across the whole phase, as well as the electric transmission, there's some high voltage electric lines that are being relocated as part of that redevelopment.
So when are you planning on starting construction on these buildings?
Yeah, so, it's a good question.
Well, I mean, just a rough estimate, not-
Yeah, ideally, the first building would start by the end of the year, it's a little aggressive, like I said, partly because of all the other constraints, like relocating the rail yard, relocating the overhead transmission line, getting Harshco a new home on site. But then another consideration is the amount of import and fill that we need, it's upwards of a million yards that's required to build all four building pads. It's a little difficult to see, but you can kind of see the lower lying area, which used to be a borrow pit for US Steel, that's where they had used to start filling in the slag. Just that alone is a couple hundred thousand yards of material, so we have a pretty long runway in terms of site development before we start going vertical, but, you know, again, ideally, we make some progress and get to a point where we'd like to be able to have a shovel in the ground before the end of the year.
You're more optimistic than the other guy. Wait, you said a million yards of fill?
Our sewer planning module didn't take, didn't take forever, it wasn't five years, but it was certainly not five months either, so, no, we understand there's a lot of challenges ahead.
Wait, I mean, you want, like to get the shovel in the ground for at least one of these buildings, but not all four?
Yes, correct. No, 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 so ideally, we'll start at least one, in a perfect scenario, we'll probably authorize construction on two at a time, so it might most likely be Seven and Nine first, there are fewer site constraints, and then Eight and Ten, like I said, because of the import required to fill in the borrow pit, that will take a little longer before we're able to get started on those. And I think it also helps in terms of deliveries of product for the market, right, and kind of the leasing trajectory that we've been on, having them phased, you know, not delivering all four buildings at the same time's probably the right approach.
Hard to find four leasers at once, right, I guess?
Yeah, I don't know, you know, it's been a very active market, but we're still working on filling out Buildings Five and Six, so, you know, hope to see that trend continue, and those buildings occupied, and, you know, flip over to the next two, but kind of taking them down two at a time seems like the right approach.
When is construction gonna be done on Five and Six roughly?
Yeah, so Six, we should finish up in the middle of summer, probably July, and then Five will be September. And again, right now, those are, you know, completion of the spec, kind of shell buildings, as we get tenant improvement. kind of shell buildings. As we get tenant improvement, depending on how extensive that is, it could extend that timeline a little bit, but at least the shells will be wrapped up at that time.
So, and Building Three still under construction as well?
Building Three is complete. So we're wrapping up the last tenant improvement now. The first tenant, actually, their lease commenced, and they've occupied the space.
That's all I have.
Yeah, we sort of blended the site agreement into a description of Phase Three. So I don't know if the Planning Commission would want to hear from, everyone wants to hear from Eric, but he's here to go through the rest of the improvements depicted. You know, Jeremy's touched on a lot of them. You know, this particular area is sort of sandwiched between MMA and Building Six. You can see that the building size is depicted on the site plan. The waiver requests, we have the four waiver requests, which were outlined in Gilmore's letter pertaining to steep slopes, woodlands, and the existing features waiver. The only other waiver that we had identified in Joe's review letter pertained to cartway width at 191-31A, which is something that's been addressed in the master site agreement, but it's a waiver that we seek for the 32-foot cartway width. And then we have a waiver from 191-34D1 relating to site triangle and PennDOT, asking for application of PennDOT standards. I believe that was a waiver that we sought for Phase Two as well. So we're happy to go through any of these with particularity or discuss any component of the development that the Planning Commission would have questions about.
And all the rest will comply?
That's correct, yes.
Well, since Eric's here.
Not just the pretty face.
With the new road configurations, how do you envision the traffic from the port getting in and out of here?
That would actually be it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can take that one.
Sorry.
So, thanks, Mike. So I think the most direct route traffic-wise will be to come in Pennsylvania Avenue, over the overpass on Old Borden Town, and shoot straight down Port Road and that extension that goes directly to the south end of the site. And that's currently where Kinder Morgan's access is today.
And then this cul-de-sac you have down here, or at the top of the sheet, I guess.
Sure.
So does, you envision trucks going down that road and entering in there?
So I think that's a discrepancy or maybe kind of an oversight on the master plan. We had discussed a few kind of different configurations, and the way that we see this playing out is Kinder Morgan, since they'll be accessing from the south side of the site, they don't really have a need to continue further to the north. There's an existing driveway off of Port Road, kind of at that location where the cul-de-sac's shown. I don't think that's going to be necessary though, because all their traffic will be coming from the south.
But as far as, I guess Mike indicated that it's in the master agreement, but as far as if trucks are going to be entering Building, you know, Nine and Ten, and you're, I guess that's the location where you're asking for a smaller cartway.
The 32 feet.
Right, that's correct. The 32 feet is the main drive through the site.
Michael, who?
I'm sorry about that.
No, you can go ahead.
Yeah, the 32 feet is the main drives throughout the entire campus. At individual intersections, we have been in front of you before, asking for relief for certain turns, but on these we're not.
So where is this 24-foot waiver that we're entertaining?
I believe it was a 32-foot wide cartway you're proposing?
We're requesting 32-foot wide cartways when the ordinance was 36, and that's been consistent all the way through from the master plan.
Okay, I thought I saw, maybe, maybe it's me.
No, I don't recollect the 24 being requested at all. It was, it was 32, and it's Comment 191-31A.
Okay. Probably me.
No problem.
And just to be clear, when the master development agreement was executed, we had identified at the outset, before we really had any approvals, a number of waivers that we thought we would need. And one of those was cartway widths of 32 feet. So I don't think the language is binding upon the township. It was just a general statement in the agreement that the township would be agreeable conceptually to a 32-foot cartway width. So, just for clarity.
I thought I saw in one of the plans that maybe it's a typo then, that there was a 24-foot wide cartway on that road, but, you know, 106 plans I could have confused.
All right, I'm good.
Is there anything else on the waivers?
No, I mean, again, want any additional color on the slopes or the woodlands, but they've been fairly consistent waivers throughout the process.
Will this phase in the letters mention traffic improvements? Will this phase include those traffic improvements?
So I can jump in on that one as well. We actually, just last week, resubmitted our, I don't remember if it's second or third cycle of comment responses to PennDOT. So a few, I mean, I don't want to jinx it, but it feels like we're getting really close to having a resolution on what the scope of those improvements are. But yeah, we would intend to jump into those right away.
Is there any public comment on this matter? All right.
You guys will be complying with all of the Fire Marshal letter and everything?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just making sure. Hmm?
Do we have a motion? Sorry.
Sure, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the, or recommend approval for the preliminary and final land development application for North Point, Area Three, Buildings Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten, One Ben Fairless Drive, TNP number 13-051-001, Zone MPM, with waiver, or based on the Jones Engineering Associates letter dated February 23, 2023, and the Fire, the Fire Marshal letter dated January 25, 2023, with waivers of, let's see, so waivers of 191-34D1, 191-52.1B3B1, 191-52.1B3B2, 191-52.1B4B2. Was that all of them?
The, the other two are 191-78C2, which is the partial waiver for the existing features, and then 191-31A is the cartway width at 32 feet.
So I see the partial waiver of 191-78C2. And where was the other one?
It's in the Jones Engineering Review at the top of Page Three.
And partial waiver for 191-31A. And with the understanding that you will comply with all of the Fire Marshal's requests.
Yes.
I'll second.
All right. Brian, poll the board.
Mary Lyschuck?
Yes.
Brian Binizzi, yes. Colin Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the approval of last month's minutes, which I don't have the date for them.
January 24, 2023.
January 24, 2003.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Make a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.